Says teens using Instagram will automatically be restricted to seeing only PG thirteen content and won't be able to change settings without a parent's permission. Separately, the results of a new study find that social media is affecting school performance.
Researchers finding the more time kids spend on sites like TikTok and Instagram, the lower their scores on reading and memory tests. Even just one hour a day on social media was found to have an impact. The study of students ages nine to thirteen found about one hour per day on social media led to test scores one or two points lower, though spending more time on social media saw a four to five point drop.
ABC's Faith Abubey. Days after Pope Leo called on church leaders to be more vocal about immigration, Chicago Cardinal Blaise Supich calls President Trump's ice crackdown unnecessary and intolerable.
Our pastors are telling us that attendance at Mass, particularly in Latino communities is down because people are afraid to come out. That's very sad, but they're also they're also afraid to go to grocery stores, get medical help.
Cardinal Supich tells the Union League that dignity is violated when electric officials create false narratives about undocumented people being a danger to the community. Dry weather this summer has now muted this year's autumn colors in the Northeast. More than forty percent of the country was considered to be in a drought this month. Dave Packer, ABC News.
Oh, no, stomach issues again?
Stomach issues?
Who are you?
Your pancreas. I could be the real reason for your diarrhea, gas, bloating, stomach pain, or loose oil stools.
I thought it was my stomach.
People often do, but any of these symptoms could mean having a condition called exocrine pancreatic insufficiency, or EPI. With EPI, the pancreas doesn't release enough enzymes to break down food, but EPI is manageable. Use the symptom checker on identifyepi.com and speak with your doctor. That's identifyepi.com. Sponsored by AbbVie.
News Talk six ten AM and one oh two point one FM, KBNU.
It's now five oh five on News Talk KBNU and with your local headlines, I'm Will Feor. Well, Utah State University's fall twenty twenty five student headcount reached a record twenty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty one, marking a continued three point two percent increase across the statewide system. Now, the enrollment surge reflects the university's land grant mission with USU welcoming its largest ever group of first time in-state students. Now interim president Al Smith said that USU's strong fall enrollment reflects the university's persistent commitment to access and opportunity. Now undergraduate enrollment grew by three point six percent and the Logan campus saw a five point seven percent rise in new students straight from high school. Now concurrent enrollment across the statewide system also increased by nearly twenty two percent. Now, the university says it is continuing to support this growth through initiatives like the Utah State Promise Scholarship for Pell Grant eligible students and also private donors who have contributed more than nine point six million dollars through over fifty eight hundred scholarships. Well, following the cancellation of Saturday's concerts due to severe weather, concertgoers are demanding refunds now from the Red West Country Music Festival. Derek Yerkes is organizing a class action lawsuit against the festival claiming that more than five hundred people want to join. Now, Yerkes described the event as a disaster citing poor communication and a chaotic evacuation despite the event being advertised as rain or shine. Now, Yerkes said that they were trying to leave, but the emergency exits were not opened and communication was not what was promised. Now, while Red West offered Saturday ticket holders entry into the Sunday shows, Yerkes argues that many attendees traveled specifically for the Saturday lineup. Now, a festival spokesperson declined to be interviewed, but said that they are working with the refund process and are asking for the public's help. And a Texas man is facing two felony charges after allegedly breaking in to the America First Field, home of Real Salt Lake, and stealing a Diet Coke. Shawn Christian Matthews, a twenty-three-year-old of Texas, was charged yesterday with second-degree felony causing property damage and third-degree felony burglary. Now Sandy Police found Matthews in the stadium about three AM last Thursday morning after a trespassing report. According to a police affidavit, Matthews claimed that he scaled a wall and then used a pole to break into a refrigerator to get the soda. Now surveillance video reportedly showed Matthews breaking into the stadium. The estimated cost to repair from the damage is over seventeen thousand dollars, according to court documents. Well, clouds continuing through the rest of the afternoon and into tonight as we'll see temperatures drop into the high thirties tomorrow, only going to be in the mid fifties as we'll see showers likely through most of the day and into Thursday. Looks like by Thursday night, storm will start to clear up and Friday and into Saturday, we'll start to see sunny skies returning with temperatures getting back into the low sixties. And news and weather this hour brought to you by Roof Rescue, dedicated to keeping your home safe and dry for over ten years now. They've been providing watertight peace of mind. Get more information at roofrescueusa.com. And with your KBNU news headlines, I'm Will Feor. More of KBN News for the People show with Jason Williams coming up next.
Today's hearing aid technology can improve not only your life, but the lives of the people who care about you. Once again, you'll be able to hear the reason for their laughter and understand conversations. Dr. Paul Danes at Cash Valley Hearing and Audiology will customize a hearing improvement program to meet your unique requirements, whatever they are. Call Cash Valley Hearing and Audiology for an appointment and let them show you how.
Bring back what you've been missing. Bring back Cash Valley Hearing and Audiology.
For the People, weekday afternoons from four till six on News Talk KBNU, six ten AM and one oh two point one FM.
Do you suffer from consistent symptoms like these and no matter how many doctors you see, things don't improve?
I definitely had fatigue and unexplained weight gain, brain fog, my joints hurt, and I just didn't feel like me. The last couple of years, I just had doctors telling me, oh, you're over forty, we can put you on prescriptions, and I just knew that wasn't what I wanted.
In conventional model, it's typically one size fits all. Everyone's heard it around like sheep and treated the exact same way. When they come to Red River, it's important to customize the treatment plan for that specific patient.
Talking with Dr. Swinwellhurst, I just immediately felt like he was listening. He had a plan for me individually as a human being.
Our whole goal is to identify the underlying mechanisms driving your condition. Then we'll put a treatment plan together that's specific to you and then slowly teach you and educate you and show you what to do and what not to do so that you're the expert in your own health long term.
Call Red River Health and Wellness at eight five 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 River.
Call Red River today. We'll do it all, everything on our own.
Welcome back to KBN News for the People. Hour two of today's show coming up this hour, Utah lawmakers finding it difficult to find common ground between each other and the Republican majorities on the future of a controversial new law that would, well, does charge hikers, fishermen, hunters and more for accessing wildlife management areas. A way to fund the wildlife management agencies, an important thing to do, is not going over so well and lawmakers are not sure how to untie this knot they've tied. We'll talk about what was discussed at an interim committee meeting this morning later on this hour. But kicking things off here this hour, candidate spotlight, our first actually, with the city council candidates for Logan City. We've spoken so far with mayoral candidate Mark Anderson. Tomorrow on the show, we'll speak with mayoral candidate Alana Nafziger, excuse me, Nafziger. And then next week, we'll be spotlighting Providence and Hiram candidates for council and mayor. And so joining us right now to spotlight races for Logan City Council incumbent in this race, Ernesto Lopez. And Ernesto, appreciate you taking some time to sit down with us here and talk about this. I say this every time to everyone, it's an underappreciated thing, but hats off to anyone who files to run for public service, for public office, because it's not an easy thing to do, especially now. But it's not an easy thing to do. I think few people would be comfortable in the spotlight that you're put in as an elected official or as in a candidate for election. And if if no one did this, we wouldn't have any choices on our ballot. So so thank you to you for filing to run. And and then that's a nice segue into the first question for you here as a candidate. What made you decide to do it? Just glutton for punishment? Is that?
Well, Jason, first, thank you for for the invitation to come and join you and
Our pleasure.
talk a little bit about my campaign and my service for Logan City through the city council. And well, thank you for everyone for tuning in and for giving us a little bit of your time to learn a little bit more about what's going on in the city with the candidates and hoping to make an informed decision as you you vote coming this November.
Sure. And those ballots going out soon.
Yes, they will start being mailed out on the fourteenth of October, which is today. Yeah, that's right. They they start making their way into their homes.
Very nice. It syncs up faster than you think, so get to know the candidates.
Yes, for sure. So to answer your question, what makes somebody like me consider running in this case again for reelection is, you know, it's been an incredible opportunity to serve our community through the city council. It's been, at first, it was a very steep learning curve. I'd say it takes some time to to learn more than just the ropes.
Sure.
And to learn how things are done. It honestly feels like there is always something new that you learn and no challenge, no ordinance or resolution is always the same. I mean, with the exception of maybe budget items that need to be, that are part of the process.
Sure.
That
That are kind of always the same.
Yeah, or similar in some ways. But I mean, most zoning things, there are little details that make you kind of consider things independently from each other. And we make a lot of those decisions that that kind of affect everybody or at least locally neighborhoods in a different way.
That's, this is, and I'm not being, I don't think, at least hyperbolic when I say this, but this is a really unique time in Logan. Logan is no longer a small city at all. Not the largest in Utah, obviously, but it's a complex city. And as Cash Valley changes, you know, much of that change is kind of centered on Logan. And also, as a city council member, I'm sure you've experienced this, Logan has a tendency, decisions made in Logan have a tendency to kind of set the tone for the rest of the valley. So there's pressure even from outside of Logan, other city leaders that are pressuring Logan to go this way or that way. It's a very complex set of plates that you have to spin.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, most of of the commercial activity happens in Logan here in the valley. Most of the traffic.
Yeah.
You will observe in Logan and as other cities have grown, or maybe even at a faster pace in recent years, you start seeing all of that growth impact Logan as well, right? People still need to get to their to their job, to shopping and go back to their homes. And so we hear from our Logan residents and we also get to hear from people that live out in Providence or in North Logan and Hyde Park who will tell us, why don't you fix your traffic problem?
I know I've done it. I'm not a Logan resident and I have to confess, Mayor Danes has been here for the the speak to the mayor segment once in a while. She comes in each month and there have been more than one times when I'm saying, hey, as she's leaving, hey, you know, have you ever thought about? Because I'm traveling through Logan on a regular basis, not as a resident. That is an important perspective to keep though, right? When you, when you think about traffic, not just on Main Street, but traffic on all the roads in Logan, whether you're headed east to west, north to south, a good percentage of that traffic, that's not Logan residents.
Correct.
And yet, the city's responsible for all of that. And that's an important perspective to keep, right?
Yeah, I mean, it is, as you probably know, or as a lot of the people that are listening know, a good portion of our city's budget comes from sales tax.
Sure.
And and while we do have most of the commercial activity in the valley happening in Logan, that really goes to help maintain all of our infrastructure that is helping everybody get from point A to point B and making sure that that they are well maintained so that we don't have a Main Street that is all of a sudden reduced to, for a long period of time, to a very one or two lanes of traffic.
Sure.
Because that would be very impactful for everyone.
Kind of hard to get things done in Providence or Hiram or North Logan or Hyde Park if the roads in Logan don't connect you, right?
Correct, yes, yes. Or at least it would be much more longer commute.
That is, and now this comes up in so many ways, sewer, water, housing planning, you know, all of these things that, as we were talking before the show, kind of fall under the umbrella of growth, which is what's on everybody's mind right now. And and so it brings us back to, you know, the planning of the Logan City Council is really in a lot of ways, planning for Cash Valley. And yet, other cities still have their own decision-making control. How do you navigate that? How do you look ahead five years, knowing what Logan does for the next five years will kind of, you know, dictate a lot of things in the valley? And yet, you've still got the Cache County Council and every other city's council and mayor who can make their own decisions. Is Logan sometimes, I guess here's what I'm trying to ask, as a city council member, do you feel Logan is sometimes thrown unfairly into a situation where you can't just make decisions for Logan residents, which is who you represent?
Yeah, I mean, we we do our best to listen first to Logan residents, right? And we we see that through the the planning process with the general plan, for example, which is currently underway to be updated. There is efforts for people to kind of get involved, go to the sessions, fill out surveys and such. But we also have specific neighborhood plans that that we kind of update on a, maybe not every year, or but we, every so often, we update those to make sure that we are still staying in tune with what people would like to see happen within their neighborhoods and within the city. But yes, I mean, there are times when when we find ourselves with challenging matters such as waste management.
Yeah, that's one that pops into my head first.
Exactly, right? I mean, it came to a point where the city saw that the way that the valley was growing versus how the city was growing, we're finding ourselves maybe serving the county more than than Logan itself, which is our primary priority, right, to serve Logan residents.
Sure.
And it was a time to kind of part ways and and recognize that in order to provide quality service to our Logan residents, it was the best way to to just part ways and do that.
Sure. And that speaks to growth in a way too, whether it be the sewers you mentioned, the green waste changes, the rec center, all these things. At one point, it may have made sense for Logan, to Logan, for Logan City to say, look, we're going to be doing this anyway, just as well include the rest of the valley. But that changed, right? As as growth, as populations grow, the cost on Logan residents became unfair. Does that mean, do you think, do you see more of this as the valley continues to grow? Will Logan have to, I hate to use the word isolate, but consider that more often, that the services they're providing, maybe it'll get a little more expensive to take your green waste to the Logan landfill, all recognizing that Logan has a budget to keep too, right?
Yes, we tried to be, to make thoughtful decisions on anytime that we have to up any prices, there's usually a study that is done.
Sure.
Some comparisons to make sure that we are staying within what most other entities are charging. For example, with a, with the solid waste, my understanding, or the landfill process, sorry, my understanding is that we're still below what now the county has to pay in a lot of the areas that had to kind of find their own provider.
Yeah, ten bucks is cheap. It's twenty-five in in Lieber County right now to take your green waste to the to the processing facility there. I learned from some family members, so ten dollars is pretty cheap and it is. But I guess what I'm getting to is it is worth recognizing that the other cities benefit from Logan offering those services, because my city doesn't offer a green waste program at all. So being able to take green waste to the the environmental facility there and the green waste dump for ten bucks, pretty cheap. But that is a Logan decision, right? If that changes, it'll, it may have to. That makes things complex.
Yeah, I mean, those are growing pains, right?
Yeah, growing pains.
And and not everything that currently is the best way to do that specific thing will permanently be be the same.
Sure.
And so we just have to kind of keep our ears, listen to what people are saying, make sure that we are, first of all, serving people from Logan in the best possible way. And and then if we can continue to provide services to the county, of course, we will continue to do that if it makes sense for Logan to do that.
Sure. Your primary concern, your constituents, right? That is fair. I, for listeners, again, we're speaking with Ernesto Lopez. He is running for the Logan City Council as an incumbent in this race. You can find out more about him via, through a couple of different means. I've linked to them all on our Facebook page. You can connect with him on Facebook and more, see what he's been up to, see what he's talking about as a candidate for reelection. On the other side of this quick break, Ernesto was part of a Let's Talk Logan event a couple of weeks ago, talking about the future of Logan, what's coming, what some of the biggest challenges are. And we'll talk about that and more with Ernesto Lopez, candidate for Logan City Council here in our studio. We'll be back with more right after this.
This is Misty Hewitt, chief program officer at CAPSA. At CAPSA, you matter. To every survivor of domestic violence and sexual assault, I want you to know you matter. At CAPSA, we see you, we believe you, and we're here to help. Whether in an unsafe relationship or carrying the trauma of past abuse, you matter to us. CAPSA is a place where you are valued and supported. You're not alone. Learn more about CAPSA and how you matter at caps.org.
Hi, it's Olivia Munn with my shelter pets Frankie and Chance, reminding you that when you adopt a shelter pet, you discover all the things that make them unique. Adopt your love at theshelterpetproject.org. Brought to you by the Ad Council, the Humane Society of the United States, and Matty's Fund.
Join us each week for Music and the Spoken Word, featuring the Tabernacle Choir at Temple Square, the longest-running continuous weekly network broadcast in the world. Each episode features modern and traditional arrangements of spiritual, classical, and contemporary music and a timely, inspiring message. Truly an uplifting program that we'll have you returning to each week. Music and the Spoken Word with the Tabernacle Choir.
Sunday mornings at eight and again in the afternoons at six on News Talk KBNU.
Welcome back to KBN News for the People. Ernesto Lopez here in the studio with us. He is a Logan City Council member, running for reelection. His name will be on your ballot, which you're actually going to be getting this week, most likely. In fact, if you haven't seen your ballot by the first of next week, mid next week, maybe start asking some questions about your registration and more. And you can find out everything you need to know regarding registration, getting a ballot, requesting a ballot, all of that stuff, a couple of different ways. You can reach out to the city, of course, and and they'll point you in the right direction. Or you can just visit vote.utah.gov and do almost everything online. So again, Ernesto is a candidate in Logan City Council race, will be speaking with mayoral candidates in future shows for Logan City. And so Ernesto, we've talked a lot about growth and some of the things that have changed recently and why they've changed, but what we haven't talked about is if, you know, and I know if reelected, you're one member of several on the city council, Logan has kind of a strong mayor situation. So a lot of people involved in making every decision, but if you have the opportunity to just kind of wave a magic wand once reelected, do you have like a list of one, two, three things that you would absolutely, absolutely want to see happen in Logan? I know this was a part of the discussion at the Let's Talk Logan event a couple of weeks ago, what the future of the city looks like. And you had some interesting comments about directions that you think would be important for the city to go. Lot of options, right?
For sure, for sure. I think if I had a magic wand, if I had a way to, to just by signing something.
Make it happen.
Make it happen. I would hope to to help with housing affordability.
Really?
I think most of the candidates also would say something about that.
Sure.
We all recognize that housing affordability is such a challenge here in in our state, in our valley. And so that would be probably, if you told me, what would would you fix if you had the power to fix just one thing, just by signing something?
It would be that one.
That would be it. I am mindful of of young couples, young professionals who are looking to start building some equity in a home that they're ready for, to move on from a rental space and and that is challenging for them, not only because the pricing of the housing is high, but because interests are still
Yeah.
higher than five or so years ago. And so that would be the probably the one thing I would want to change. The other thing I probably would want to to do is to advocate for more sustainable energies to to find their way to us. I know it's many, many times it's out of our control.
Sure.
And but I would hope that more sustainable energy, solar and thermal that is being produced in Utah, actually was secured for Utahns. A lot of it is actually going to California.
Yeah, we're selling it, right?
Exactly. And so that would be probably another one that I would, I would try to make happen if it was up to me. And then I'm a huge supporter of finding the future rec center, whatever that looks like, whether it's a
Yeah.
county or an intercity type of agreement that we can make happen. I think our community deserves a space where they can find healthier habits, exercise, spend quality family time.
Sure. That is, that's going to be a tough one, right? Again, recognizing that Logan, I think, made a good decision for Logan residents in, you know, getting out of serving the entire valley that way. But we do need one. Do you have a preference of any of the ideas? I've heard everything from one in the north, one in the south, to an intercity kind of thing with independent nodes at each city. Is one starting to kind of take shape, take shape as making more sense to you?
My preference would be a bigger, one bigger one.
One bigger one.
Instead of two smaller ones. I think if we were able to to get something that had things that you couldn't have in two separate ones. We keep hearing of people that would love to have an indoor pool space.
It's come up a lot.
That that also allows some of the older generations to kind of exercise and such. I think that would, for me, would be a bigger win, but I would not close the door definitely to having two on one, on the north side and one on the south side.
Yeah, you can see pros and cons to all of them, right?
Yes, for sure.
Logan City Council has had, you know, over the last, I went back just looking at some of the most recent council meetings and I don't know that any council meetings were ever sleepy in years past, but it definitely seems that every council meeting, there is something big on the docket, something, a big decision that's being made. And most of it, again, tying back to growth and planning. You mentioned the development of a long-term general plan for growth. Have you heard any, you know, preliminary feedback from that or what are you hearing as you talk to people in your campaign? Are we, are we doing a good job wrapping our heads around this? I know at first, it's just resistance to change, right? That's, that's our very human first reaction. But I feel like things are shifting a bit to where people are starting to say, okay, I'm going to actually start having an opinion about the change instead of just, are you seeing that as well?
I mean, we've probably, everybody in the council have heard at some point concerns about growth, generally speaking, multifamily type of developments. Some people feel like there is too many, too much of that going on in Logan, in Logan. And I think what's important when it comes to housing is that we continue to increase the supply and increase the diversity of type of housing that is available. Not everybody wants big yards, not everybody wants a small yard, not everybody wants to have a yard at all.
Sure.
And so I think it's important that we continue to to look at projects that not only increase the supply, but the diversity, the type of housing that is available to to our Logan residents.
That is, I think one of the greatest things that I've seen as a, as a non-Logan resident who spends a lot of time in Logan for for either, you know, work during the week or entertainment on the weekends, downtown Logan has been amazing, watching that change and evolve into what it is now. Do you feel there is space in Logan for something like that in another location? Is there another hub, a weekend nightlife hub that you can envision or, you know, obviously every town has its own, only has one downtown, right? But you see things happening along Fourteenth North there with the mall coming down and all that. Do you see there being a second spot that you'd like to have happen?
Yeah, I think I've heard conversations or comments that maybe around Federal Street maybe could be another
Sure.
type of area that sees a little bit more planning as far as what kind of things could increase the vibrancy of that. increase the vibrancy of that specific area.
Good idea.
Heard comments of maybe parts of 400 North could, could become an area where, where you see that the same type of development that was done, or, or I guess, not development, but redevelopment or
Sure.
repurposing of Center Street, right? Because Center Street has become a magnet for a lot of activity, a lot of
Oh.
festivals, which I do believe increase that sense of community.
Yeah.
That, that people feel that connection to, to, to the city and to see festivals that maybe were kind of happening in, in small parts of the city that were kind of hard to find at times.
Yeah.
And I, I do feel that those festivals are bringing an increased sense of community.
I, you know, the first time I remember going downtown when Center Street was closed was a few years ago, the Latino Festival that happens every September. And that was the first time I saw, I think, the potential for Center Street, because they closed it off. It was a street fair, booths, food trucks, all of that, and then the stage and people dancing in the street. That was the first time I realized, oh, this is what downtown can be on a regular basis. And, and, and that, you know, hats off to, to all of you on the city council and in the mayor, those in the mayor's office for kind of planning that out. Challenging times for Logan, obviously. One thing I have to say, and maybe we can wrap up on this, but as I've spoken with candidates, and I'm surprised by this because I'm aware of a lot of the challenges, whether it's water, housing, planning for the future, everyone's optimistic. Everyone in Logan City right now seems to, in, in an elected position, seems to feel, we, yeah, we have a lot of challenges, we can get a handle on this. Do you, what do you feel is maybe the biggest challenge to doing that?
I don't know if challenged, but just kind of echo what, what you're saying is, I do feel there is great discussions that happen at city council. I wouldn't say that we all feel the same about every single
Sure.
issue or, or decision that we have to make, but I think we have great discussions.
No one agrees with Jeannie, right? Ever?
Or with me, or with Mark. But I think we, we have great discussions. Sometimes they're short discussions, five, 10 minutes, but sometimes they go for hours.
That's interesting.
And I, I think they do end up leading us to making better decisions. And so I feel like that's been, for me anyways, it's been great, a great learning experience to hear what everybody's thinking and hearing what people are coming to, to share as public comment. Those comments do influence how we feel about things. So I always feel great about encouraging people to come and speak in
Yeah.
how they feel about decisions.
It's one of the things that I see from my perspective here on the show, I see this all the time, people telling me, I didn't know, I didn't, you were invited. If you chose not to show up and be a part of the conversation, that's on you. I know you can't say that, Ernesto, I will say it though. Your city, Logan City, has, I think, done the best job of any city in the valley of reaching out to residents and including residents in the conversations, and I hope people continue to take advantage of that, and I hope other cities follow that lead. A lot of change, a lot of growth, and a lot of things that are going to, you know, require everyone putting their heads together. So hats off to you, Ernesto, again, for, for your time on the council already and, and your role there, but also choosing to run for reelection. Again, it's no easy thing to do, to put yourself out there in that spotlight. And for listeners, if, if candidates don't run, there's no one on your ballot to choose from. So Ernesto Lopez, Logan City Council member and candidate for reelection in the municipal races, general election playing out as we speak. Ballots started going out today, and you should be seeing that by the end of the week. If you haven't seen it by mid to end of next week, check with the city and vote.utah.gov, check your registration, reach out to the clerk's office, see if there's a problem there, and you'll still have time to get a ballot. But they should be hitting your mailboxes here in Logan City within the next few days. So Ernesto Lopez, again, candidate for reelection in the municipal races. Thank you for taking the time to stop by today, and I've linked to Ernesto's Facebook page and more on our own, or you can just simply do a search for Ernesto Lopez, Logan City Council and find it that way. Keep track of what he's up to. And Ernesto, again, thank you for making the time today.
Thank you so much, Jason. I just want to thank everyone that tuned in. It's been an absolute privilege, I feel like, to serve on the city council.
Sure.
And I'm hoping that I will earn people's trust once more and, and their vote this coming November, and that I will continue to serve on the, on the city council.
I appreciate making the time to come in and speak with listeners today. And for listeners, we'll keep these candidate spotlights going tomorrow and into next week as well. So ballots are going out, get to know the candidates, starting with Ernesto Lopez here. Again, candidate for Logan City Council. Ernesto, thank you to our listeners, thank you, and we'll be back after the news with KVN News Will Feel Right.
Well, thank you, Jason. A 21-year-old Blackfoot, Idaho woman, Kalani Orr, died last Friday after being accidentally shot during a hunting trip in Fremont County, according to the local coroner Brenda Dye. Now Orr was pronounced dead at the scene after a relative's gun accidentally discharged, striking her in the chest. Now that's according to Orr's aunt, Amanda Graff. Now the relative attempted chest compressions for over an hour in the isolated area. Orr had recently returned from a mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in New Zealand and had just been married last April. Now Graff described Orr as a very outgoing and very loving person who loved the outdoors and had a million friends. Her family is remembering a recent weather, fall weather trip that the family took to Jackson Hole, Wyoming as one of their last memories together. In other news, a man died last night after a robbery escalated into a fatal shooting near Main Street Park in Sandy. Now Police Sergeant Michael Olson said that the incident occurred at about 8:20 PM, just west of the Sandy Rec Center. A man in his 40s was transported to a local hospital in very critical condition and then later succumbed to his injuries. Authorities are now investigating. And according to a recent report, the most effective way to combat the Colorado River shrinking water supply is to focus on agricultural conservation. Now, the study was done by UC Riverside and the Utah Rivers Council. Now, the comprehensive analysis of $1 billion in federal spending found that programs paying farmers to reduce water use or leave fields empty were remarkably cost-effective. Now, the co-author, Mehdi Nammadi, said that the spending money to conserve water within agriculture sector seems to be one of the most cost-effective ways. Since agriculture uses roughly 80% of river's water, he noted that it represents the biggest opportunity for savings. Now, the findings were published in the Journal of the American Water Resources Association, and it suggests that policymakers can maximize water savings by prioritizing incentive-based programs for farmers, particularly those who are growing water-intensive crops. Well, the clouds continuing through the rest of the afternoon with more showers headed our way. Overnight, we'll start to see a chance of increasing showers as temperatures going to drop into the high 30s tomorrow, only in the mid 50s for our Wednesday, as showers will continue through most of the day. That's going to continue into Thursday, then the storms should start to move out by Thursday night, and we'll start to see a mix of sun and clouds Friday and into Saturday. And weather this hour is brought to you by Logan Extermination. If voles are active, it can really make a mess of your lawn. That's why you want to call Logan Extermination. They can take care of those voles, weeds, and other pests around your yard. 752-8450, it's Logan Extermination. And I'm Will Feuert with your KVNU news headlines.
ABC News, I'm Dave Packer. They tried and failed again. For the eighth time, the Senate could not get the votes to advance legislation that would reopen the government through November 21st. Democratic Minority Leader Chuck Schumer contrasting the healthcare cuts his party wants to restore with the $20 billion in aid given today by the US to Argentina.
If this administration has $20 billion to spare for a MAGA-friendly foreign government, how can they say we don't have the money to lower healthcare costs here at home?
Israeli authorities saying that Hamas is dragging out the return of dead hostages, and the UN humanitarian offices, Israel informed them it would slow aid to Gaza in response. President Trump today saying if Hamas doesn't disarm, quote, "We will disarm them." A hiring slowdown is a growing risk to the US economy. That from Federal Reserve Chair Jerome Powell today, suggesting that the Federal Reserve will cut interest weights, interest rates twice more this year. This is ABC News.
Help us recognize the champions in our communities. Submit your nominations by visiting kvnutalk.com. The above and beyond salute, sponsored by Firehouse Subs.
How do you picture the golden years of life? Does it involve meaningful activities with family and friends? Maybe a field trip to some local sites with fun activities and social opportunities? Homemade meals, so you don't have to go to the grocery store? If you pictured the golden years as some of your best years, may I suggest you see what Legacy House of Logan has to offer?
At Legacy House of Logan, we know how to take care of your loved ones, and it shows in every detail. Legacy House of Logan, your life just a little easier.
Thanks again to Ernesto Lopez, just saying goodbye to him here in the studio. He, I didn't mention this while we were speaking, but I should throw this out as well, but Ernesto was nice enough to come down on very short notice. I usually try to give candidates a few days to prep for their candidate spotlight, but Ernesto, I had sent the, well, this has been happening to me a lot, and maybe you'll sympathize, but I had, I had typed the message to Ernesto, a text. We'd had him on the show before, so I had his, I had his cell phone number, and I, I had typed the message to him. And, and then today I was wondering why he'd never responded, and, and so I went in to send a follow-up to see if he wanted to come on today, and I realized I had never hit send. And I don't know what's going on with me, but I've been doing this a lot lately, typing a text in my mind, and, and my eyeballs see my thumb hit the little arrow, and I don't know what goes wrong, but I go back in and the text didn't actually send. So if that's been happening to you and you're feeling like maybe you're losing it, no, this is, has been happening to me too. I have absolutely no idea why. All right. This has been kind of an interesting one for me to watch because it, it was a law that at the time didn't really get a lot of debate because it was, it just kind of made sense as it was being discussed. I think most lawmakers, I heard a little bit of the debate in, in the audio of a committee hearing back in the session earlier this year. I didn't really think there was anything controversial really about it, and I guess I didn't think it through. And it sounds like a lot of lawmakers didn't either, because they seemed a little surprised by the public backlash on this too. But what was debated back in the session as a, a way to just fund wildlife management agencies, which need to be funded, right? So wildlife management areas and agencies, the agencies that manage them are pretty dang important. And, and a lot of these wildlife or, and water fowl management areas in Utah are funded, you know, through a variety of mechanisms, licenses and things like that. And, and what this bill did was just add another. So what I'm trying to say here is, is somehow generating money to pay for the wildlife management area and the agency that manages it, or manages multiple areas, as is the case usually here in Utah. Finding ways to fund that is not new at all. So that's not what this law did. What it did is it just added a new one. But it has been extremely controversial. And that is basically, you know, the same funding that came from hunting and fishing licenses. Well, people were finding, now this started with a single hiker on the Sky High Trail, which goes through the Dairy Fork Wildlife Management Area near Spanish Fork. And what happened, it started with a single hiker, but what eventually kind of became a groundswell of public outcry, when mountain bikers, OHV riders, horseback riders, they were finding, so they were running up against people stopping them and saying, you know, you actually have to pay to come in here. This is a wildlife management area, and a, either you have to be in here, you need a hunting, a fishing, or a combination license. Because if you're in here without that, you haven't paid. And again, when this was being discussed, this was tucked inside a gigantic bill of just pretty innocuous hunting-related changes to statute and license requirements and things like that, that was sponsored by our own representative, Casey Snyder, Republican from the Paradise area. It was House Bill 309, and you can go read the language of it. But it was, again, as it was discussed, I heard a bit of it. So I oftentimes track what our lawmakers are up to for potential discussion here on the show, and this is one that I followed. And I listened to the committee hearing as it played out via the live stream and a few other things, and we, I ended up not really talking about it on the show because, again, I thought it was that much of a, kind of a boring nuts and bolts bill, which is really 90% of what the legislature does, which is good. I'm not complaining about that. The bills that get a lot of attention and get lawmakers on CNN usually tend to be the worst. So this was Representative Snyder's bill, House Bill 309 again, just made some little changes, and, and one of them was this, that, you know, you have to fund wildlife management areas. So basically, there were signs posted saying, you know, if you're here without a hunting or a fishing or a combination license, and you can be cited for that. This is an area that you have to have contributed to through a license to be in. Understandably, this was very controversial because we're talking a lot of popular hiking trails, a lot of popular mountain biking trails. There was a birdwatching group in, along the Wasatch Front somewhere that, that made some noise about this as well, because they had never had to buy, they, they just went and bought licenses, but they posted their Facebook page that they'd had to do it in order to be in compliance with the law and not get cited if they were stopped while out there on the trail. And they just pointed out, we've never had to do this before. This has been a birdwatching retreat that we've taken every year at this time. It was in August, I think, and we've never had to buy a license before. And, and so this started to pick up stream, steam, sorry. And so, so there has been some discussion about this. Back in July, the Senate sponsor of Representative Snyder's bill, Senator Mike McKel, commented on this in an interview with the Salt Lake Tribune. He said, "The impact on the public was much more than, than we expected when we passed the legislation." And, and again, it wasn't until this summer when wildlife rangers began issuing warnings that it really started to pick up steam. The signs went up earlier in the year after the bill was passed, saying you need a license to be here, a hunting or a fishing or a combination license. But when wildlife rangers actually started issuing warnings to mountain bikers and birdwatchers and hikers and things like that for treading on wildlife management area land, which, again, many of these people and their communities and their parents before them and their grandparents before them have been doing for years, that's when the phone calls and the emails start coming into state lawmakers, and they got an earful for it. It's, now the question is, what do they do? The law, it went into effect in early May, requires all adults, regardless of their recreational intent, that's from the actual language of the law, to carry a hunting or fishing license when recreating on a wildlife management area. And this applies to Davis, Salt Lake, Utah, and Weber Counties with a handful of exceptions. And licenses are not hugely expensive, but they aren't cheap. 40 bucks, I think is the cheapest now in Utah, 150 for a non-resident combination or hunting, I think it is. They are good for a year, but that's still, you know, not pennies. And so now anyone that's actually wanted to hunt on the land or fish on the land has already bought one of these, and they're probably out there thinking, you know, what's the big deal? And that's kind of where I fall, to be honest with you. Folks who want to hunt and fish on, in these wildlife management areas have always had to pay. Part of me says if, if you're going to require a license for people to, to mountain bike, hike, birdwatch, all that stuff, like a state park, you got to pay for the management, right? So buy a license. But I also get why this is controversial, because, again, these are areas where people have hiked and biked and, and birdwatched and gone for picnics and all kinds of things for generations in some areas. Yeah. So last month, some, some proposed revisions were presented to the Judiciary Interim Committee, and that's where this discussion kind of stalled out a bit. And that's where this discussion kind of, uh, stalled out a bit. Representative Nelson Abbott, a Republican from Orem, uh, he, he brought a proposal in, in September to the committee that his district cuts through Utah County and, and he was contacted by, he said, uh, uh, close to 100 constituents who were upset about the change. And some of them had actually had, had, had interaction with, with rangers who had, you know, gave them, given them a warning, uh, verbal or otherwise. Uh, no one was cited, he said, but still. And, uh, he said that he, he heard a lot of consternation was what he told the committee. So last month he presented some revisions. He said, "People don't want to pay to hike on public lands and it's not fair to make them do it. And they've always been able to do it and it's never been an issue until now." Uh, the committee agreed. They, they approved his motion. Um, and, uh, there were some Republicans who voted no. Um, so it was approved nine to three on a committee that is basically nine to three Republicans and Democrats, but the three voting against were Republicans. Uh, Stephanie Grecius from Eagle Mountain, she objected because she said another committee is already looking at the law. So her, it wasn't really an issue with the proposed changes. It was that she didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And Representative Schallenberger, a Republican from Oregon, or Orem, sorry, uh, voted against it. He actually spoke and urged the committee to reject the proposal in, in favor of one he was planning to present on Wednesday in the Natural Resources and Agricultural Committee, ended up not presenting that. Um, or he ended up waiting a day to present that. And his proposal is very different. Um, he said, he believes that the, the, uh, original proposal by Representative Snyder here in Cache Valley, uh, made a top priority of, to educate people on how wildlife management areas differ from public lands. And so his proposal, Schallenberger's proposal is that licenses would still be required in these wildlife management areas, but in addition to paying, uh, the fee for the license, people could instead also pay with their time and participate in organized trail work, cleanup efforts, uh, or, or being forced to watch a, a, a short informational video before entering. How fun would that be? Um, I don't like the second idea as much. Schallenberger said it's about finding a balance, uh, between recreation and wildlife management. And he's right though. This is different than public lands. This, uh, these areas are managed by and paid for by taxpayers and, and that money has to come from somewhere. Uh, the two competing ideas will have to be debated by the full legislature before anything really happens. And that'll probably not be until January before you see some changes. But, uh, Representative Snyder, for what it's worth, told the committee, uh, that he introduced the license requirement last session to create some balance on the, the wildlife management agencies, which are very popular. And he said he worked for several years with stakeholders to narrow the scope. Uh, it designed, uh, Snyder said, "So that those individuals recreating in whatever capacity they choose are contributing to the establishment or the maintenance of those very areas," which again, is a fair ask. You want it to stay wild and beautiful? You're gonna have to pitch in a little bit. I, but again, I, I understand why it's unpopular too. Uh, this is one of those situations where I'm glad I'm not a lawmaker. Good luck, fellas and, and women. I hope you figure this one out. Uh, check it out though. If you want to see the full, uh, article with background and more from the Salt Lake Tribune, I've linked to it on our Facebook page with quotes from Representative Snyder on the guy who started this all. I'm just kidding. It's, it's a good idea, honestly. But I get, again, why it's getting some backlash. Check it out. I've linked to it on our Facebook page and we'll be back right after this.
Hey Chuck, people seem to need Dollar Loan Center more than ever these days.
Look, banks stopped lending money years ago to average folks who just need a grand or so for a little while to get through their situation. They say that half the country can't even withstand a thousand dollar emergency. And that's where we come in. We get it. People end up in a pinch. You always know where you stand at the Dollar Loan Center. We're very transparent, lend more, charge less, give you more time to pay back and treat you like family. If you like your family, that is.
You're spot on, Chuck. DLC lends up to $5,000 in minutes and you can get your cash in person at one of our 70 locations, on our website, dontbebroke.com, or even over the phone with one of our helpful, real staff members. You're gonna love Dollar Loan Center.
Are you ready to upgrade to your dream kitchen? This is Jay at Darrell's. We have some sweet, sweet specials. Going on with KitchenAid, Cafe, and more. Save up to $3,000 extra in mail-in rebates from KitchenAid or Cafe and up to $950 back from Darrell's. Design your dream kitchen at Darrell's today with your favorite brands. Darrell's, West Line Airport Road, open until 6:00 PM on weekdays, 5 on Saturday.
As a lifelong Idahoan, I know the importance of defending our values and protecting our way of life. I'm Congressman Mike Simpson and I'm proud to work alongside President Trump to deliver our conservative agenda for Idaho families. Driving down inflation, securing the border, and returning to American energy independence. It's an honor to be your voice in Congress and to fight for a stronger, safer, and more prosperous nation. To learn more about my work in Washington and across Idaho, visit simpson.house.gov.
Paid for by official funds authorized by the House of Representatives.
Thanks again to Ernesto Lopez for joining us this hour, to our listeners for joining us as well. Hope you'll be back tomorrow. We'll kick things off tomorrow with a brand new episode of For the People and an opportunity to spotlight more candidates as we move through the week. This week we'll be speaking with Alana Nafziger, candidate for Logan City Mayor in that race, uh, and also candidates from Hiram Providence and some others. So stick around. Candidate spotlight's kicked off today with Ernesto Lopez, but, uh, more to come tomorrow on the show. The ballots are going out, short amount of time to get to know the candidates and we're here to help. So be with us tomorrow. Stick around. Dave Ramsey is next here on KVNU Logan.